Two things I would just mention to you, and I don't want to take a lot of your time because we've heard of a very good discussion about the budget. Whenever you have declining enrollment and you're looking at pro-capita expenditures, and looking at maintenance of effort, you're putting yourself on the downward spiral. I worry about that a lot because we're going to start losing teachers, we're not competitive in terms of our salary base, and with the number of students continuing to go down, we're going to start losing our economic viability, and it becomes for the college increasingly difficult to attract people to come and live in the county. So, two things I'd like to just close by saying. One, the way the, I think, I think this county is well-run, I know there's lots of people who are asking for money. I think Dr. Couch's comments are very well. This is very well thought through. We need to think about remembering that we have declining enrollments, but that our needs and that $500,000 more should be requested was well thought through, and would be put against the programs that are in fact increasing our ability to attract people to the county and making the public schools more viable. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Hi, I am Rebecca Harris Smith. I'm going to be referencing the numbers that impact Kent County Public Schools, not the numbers that we saw in the presentation, because some of that, the public school budget actually goes to Chesapeake College. And I, like so many others here, have noticed that the proposed budget that was presented tonight includes a massive cut to Kent County Public Schools. It is 13,000 less than last year, and 636,000 less than what has actually been requested. Even though we've all agreed at different times during this past school year that we actually need to do more than we did last year. All across the country, it has become increasingly clear that we need to see an increase of social workers and counselors in every school. We need to keep up with changing times and increases in mental health conditions. Earlier in this school year, there was a lot of support from the commissioners for hiring more support staff to help with these kinds of issues and to help identify kids who may need even more follow-up and care. But this proposed budget that we saw tonight will not allow for that. We can't increase staff with even less money than we had last year. Please don't hide behind the line, we don't determine how the budget is spent. You received a proposed budget from Dr. Couch with a requested amount for each line item. The budget detailed everything that Kent County Public Schools, our kids, and our teachers need. You cannot add these crucial positions without increased funding or without cutting programs. And I don't know if you've actually been paying attention for the last few years, but there's already been so many things cut. Jobs have been cut, programs, the late afternoon school bus, now kids can't stay for after-school activities. You've got people in Kennedyville complaining that there's nothing for these kids to do except get in trouble. That was an actual discussion at a candidate Q and A that I attended two weeks ago. Residents complaining that the kids don't have enough to do, therefore, we cannot keep making cuts. It is affecting everyone in the community now. It is actually remarkable to me that we still have as many wonderful programs as we do. Our teachers and staff are spinning gold out of almost nothing, but they cannot keep doing this. Voting for the budget as it was proposed tonight is a vote against our public schools, which in turn is a vote against Kent County. Everyone in a community benefits from having good schools. Good schools improve home values. Good schools help create good citizens. Good schools help keep businesses and families here. I would implore you to make the right decision and vote to support our schools, like you keep saying you do. Show me this time, don't keep telling me. Ladies and gentlemen, today is the last day to register to vote before the primaries. If you're not already registered, please hurry and do so. You can do it from your phone, that's how I did it. These commissioners will be voting on this proposed budget, I believe, next week.
Your time has expired.
It expired, expired? When I timed it in, I came in at 2:30.
I'm here to deny my support for full funding for our education system, but to talk about the measurement of commitment to that system. The Economic Development Commission presented the updated strategic plan to you in 2017. There was an overarching goal of education excellence. It states, "Support Kent Forward Initiative to Make Kent County Public School System One of the Top Five in the State." Further, there's a paragraph in the conference of plan that was just recently approved by this board of commissioners. Dealing with education in the United States, Kent County should strive to have the best school system in the state and cater to the needs of all the students. This will require innovative practices and outreach to business and community leaders. Both of those documents have your commitment and your approval. We all know the stories about families leaving the county to seek better schools for their children. We know the stories about prospective employees being advised to live in other counties with purported superior school systems. Our school system, with the support of groups like Kent Forward, SOS, and others, have been or are working extremely hard to change those perceptions. True economic development can occur with a top-ranked school system, which will attract employees, businesses, homebuyers, and other people to come to our county. In various commissioner meetings last year, you all have always indicated your support of that system. What I see now is an erosion of that support and that commitment. Something has led you to waver in your total support of the school system. Yes, there is support, but not to the level that will allow our schools to continue moving toward that high level of excellence. We must make that commitment to a superior school system. You've talked about economic development through reports that Pat gave you. A foundation, a benchpin of economic development is a superior school system. This county has always prided itself on the ability to come together and find solutions to our challenges. Just look how the community has come together on the hospital and bridge issues. This time is no different. Look at the support in this room for the school system. There is still time to find ways to collaborate and solve the funding challenges. We cannot regress, we cannot lose momentum, and we cannot afford to lose one more family.
Thank you. Good evening, my name's Ed Silver, I'm the Human Resources Supervisor with Kent County Public Schools. I've been a teacher, and a principal, and administrator in Kent County for 28 years, so I have some perspective over what we've had to do over the years to continue to strive to make our schools as great as they can be. You know, when you talk about great schools, there are two things in every bit of research, and that is high-quality teachers and strong leadership. Those are the two things, if you look at our requests, they're the things that we want to focus on and what we're asking for. How do we support those, those high-quality teachers? We've talked about that before, about having competitive salaries, so that when we go out and we recruit teachers, we can attract the best here. And as Dr. Couch said, we don't compare it with our neighbors, we don't always compare it with those around the state or the region. The second, though, is effective leadership, and that's a much maligned group. And I risk saying that because it has been the area that we've tightened the belt more than any other. Six years ago, we had 26 administrators in this county. We now have 16. We have, yes, we have reduced students, we have reduced schools, but the same requirements from the state, the expectations from our parents, the accountability that's there is resting on a much smaller group. I look in the eyes of the administrators in our system, and I see a group that is working incredibly long hours, spending much, much time, and oftentimes getting beaten up on social media on things that are even out of their control. So as we look at this, one of the things we have to look at is not just that we're competitive for our teachers, but that we have competitive salary and benefits for our administrators as well. We try to address that in our budget request, that has been something. Kent County has two rivers, either side of the county, the Chester and the Sasser Press. If our administrators were to cross either one of those rivers today, they'd be making $20,000 to $30,000 more per year. There's a commitment here because we're committed to our kids, but when I look forward, how are we going to retain, how are we going to recruit high-quality leadership going forward? How do we do it? How do we start that? By funding the budget of the Kent County Board of Education. Thank you.
Lots of us here tonight are going to try to convince you to change your minds about the budget. They're going to plead their case, tell you about cutting their Board of Education budget for teachers, students in general, or their kids specifically. They'll talk about the value of a good school system to economic development, and no doubt you'll respond with your standard lines that we don't tell the Board if they have to spend their money, or that we should take their issues to an apple, which we've done. You say these things knowing full well you should hide their hands by underfunding our schools yet again. I'm not here to try to explain the damage you're doing because you already know how cutting the budget will affect everyone. The entire budget process was pointless because apparently your minds were made up just before it started. I sat here two weeks ago and heard one of you say, "Just give everyone roughly what they got last year, and cross their fingers for a better year next year," and so here we are. I haven't given up on Kent County, but I have given up on you. High school students and community leaders stand before you and call you out for your lack of leadership, and you deflect. We have meetings with you and with county employees trying to find common ground or some way forward, but they're just as stuck as we are. We ask anyone that might listen for advice about how we can get through to you that this budget needs to be funded. The thing is, you've all been in these meetings, in these positions for years. What we've seen, what I've seen after three years of watching this budget process play out, is that what we see is apparently all we're going to get from you. So I'm not going to try to convince you to change your minds because you already know this isn't good, it isn't right, and people are probably going to lose their jobs, and our children will suffer for it. I could reconsider and go back to the drawing board and try again to distribute our tax dollars in a way that does less harm, but I have no faith that you will. You may have noticed the room has been more full lately, especially tonight. People are watching your meetings online now, a service you said was too costly and cumbersome to provide. They're learning that this is not a space where problems get solved. Now that the meetings are accessible to those who work at night, are disabled, or don't have a car to drive here, or who need childcare or eldercare, those people who couldn't be involved are tuning in. So whether you fix this down, or whether you win or lose the upcoming elections, get used to this level of scrutiny because we are watching.
My name is, you know who I am, but I wanted to say, I'm Franslaw Sullivan. I'm a resident small business owner in Kent County. I've lived here for 16 years. I have one child in Kent County Public Schools, and another who will attend next school year. I'm an active PTA member and an active community member. I work primarily with nonprofits and with other small businesses. When SOS met with each of you individually to talk about the school budget, William and Ron both assured us that we would not be disappointed with the funding that the schools would receive. I left those meetings feeling cautiously optimistic. Billy assured us the opposite, that he'd not support providing the funding that Dr. Couch was asking for. Since that time, I've attended multiple meetings here, and her week-by-week carrier support for our schools has dwindled. You claimed at the last meeting that you do not make line-driven decisions for the Board of Education, yet during this entire budget cycle, you've repeatedly made statements to the contrary. You do not think they need a defense for the bus depot. You do not think we need a three-year-old program. You do not think we need social workers, and you will provide some of the salary increases for our teachers. I understand that you have to make decisions for the entire county and all of the departments. I also understand that you continue to anticipate flat revenues. If the reason that you cannot fully fund the school budget is because our county lacks the funds, and not because of your personal feelings about fences, three-year-old programs, social workers, and teachers' salaries, then you need to be clear about that in your official capacity. I'm not going to ask what you plan to do to improve revenues, to support our schools, to make Kent County more than a destination. Instead, I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. I'm not going to vote for any of you. I'm going to encourage my friends and neighbors to do the same. I'm going to use my resources to help others in our community become more involved in the decisions being made on their behalf. Thank you.
So as you know, I've been following the goings-on here at commissioners' meetings for the past couple of years, starting primarily with an interest in what was going on with the school consolidation. But with growing concern, as I became familiar with the various issues that our county faces under your leadership. So throughout this process, I learned how businesses and organizations best work with you. They start by thanking you profusely for anything that you've ever done for them. They march up here and they talk about how grateful they are, how generous you've been to them in the past, then they make to their request and hope for the best. They don't push their case if you say no, they don't argue, they go home, and then later they explain to me that they need to play nice, because if they get on your bad side, you'll start rejecting their requests for permits, or funding, or whatever it is that they're asking for out of spite. So I've been told by these same people, business leaders, nonprofit leaders, community organization members, that I need to play nice with you today. That if I keep saying you aren't supportive of our schools, you'll start taking away funding out of spite. That I need to thank you again for fixing that football field, which somebody already thanked you for. Well, believe it or not, I actually think more of you than that. I'd like to think that nothing I say or do will force you to put your loose egos ahead of what is best for our kids. But this budget is unequivocally, without question, a great big no to education. Dr. Couch laid out exactly what she felt our teachers and kids need, she told you what the increased funding was going to pay for, and you spent most of this budgeting process arguing about fences and the three-year-old program that you aren't even going to have to pay for. You have found all kinds of reasons not to fund her budget, and most of them involve questioning her ability to make choices that are best for the kids in her care, which is her job after all, not yours. She's the one who has a doctorate in education, not you. She's the one who has decades of experience in the public school system, not you. The budget you'll be voting on for next week actually decreases the dollars Dr. Couch will have to work with next year. I'm going to assume that you know and understand what Dr. Couch is hoping to accomplish with her requested budget increase, things that will improve our schools and services. And so I'd like to think that the actual reason you would vote against for funding requests is that the county simply doesn't have the money to pay for it, and you just can't figure out how to fix that. If that's the case, why don't you just say so? I believe the actual issue here is not whether the buses can share the depot, is not whether the three-year-old program is going to interfere with the family-centered services, is not whether having counselors as full-time staff is better or worse than contracting them. I believe the issue here is that you've been looking at flat revenues for the county for the entire duration of your terms in office, and the only thing you know how to do when dealing with the budget is to dole out about the same amount as you dole out the previous year, knowing that it'll basically keep things afloat. I understand that figuring out what to do with our financial situation is a daunting and difficult task, and I'm the first person to say that I don't think we pay you enough to do this job. But the fact is, you signed up for this job, this is your job. You knew what you were in for, and you told your constituents that you could do it. I happen to think that selling all of your departments, year in and year out, to keep tightening their belts and hoping for better luck next year isn't a plan. It's a failure. A failure to buckle down and figure this out, and a failure to lead. And so I'm asking you to take this budget and start all over again. Figure out what you're going to prioritize. You all claim you want to prioritize economic development and education, approach your budget with that in mind. Figure out what small things can move the ball forward, figure out what big things are worth investing in, listen to our business leaders, our families, our nonprofits, understand what it is your constituents want and need, create a vision for the future that we can all get behind. Put the principles of our comprehensive plan to work for goodness sakes. Inspire all of these people who have told me to play nice to come here not in fear of potential retribution, but to come here in partnership and trust. Be the leaders we are all asking you to be. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, my name is Tim O'Brien. I have two kids in Kent County, and I'm very happy with everything, and I also just want to say I do agree with all of the comments made here today, but I wanted to change the subject. One of the things that, I actually like looking for solutions, one of the things I would like invite people here, and also I'd like to understand maybe a response from the commissioners, if you quickly download the Kent County, the over-the-counter tax records, these are all the basic properties around the county that have not paid property taxes, that are going into default or having problems. Our schools are funded with property taxes. If you quickly take a look at Queen Anne, and all the other counties around here, you see their lists, maybe half a page, one page of default properties, poverty, whatnot. You look at Kent County, we have five pages of unpaid properties, or paid properties that have not paid property taxes. Literally, and I'm not trying to put anything out on anybody, but we have hundreds of thousands of dollars in Kent County of unpaid property taxes, uncollected, which is the basic job of the commissions. They go to tax, but basically doing a quick list of the names, you see names after names. I did a quick thing, you just look up the names of businesses on the Maryland databases, you cross-check with court records. If anybody wants to download these, they're all online. I found it very interesting, like, Duchette, I don't see, Churn Creek Land Associates, C.D. Reed and Sons, Traver, there was five different companies that collectively owned many, many properties, collectively owed $100,000 in property tax, as of right now. They owe, this county, $100,000. These companies owed $100,000 last year. They all belong to one person, Charles Reed, one individual owes this county over $100,000 in property taxes. They didn't pay it last year either. And then all the other people on this list, our list of uncollected property taxes is larger than any other county in the area on the eastern shore. This is, I don't know if you don't have a person to collect it or enforce it, but this is a problem, and I really would like to know a response of why Kent County is disproportionately not making people pay the property taxes. I don't pay, I've got two properties in this town, if I don't pay my property taxes, I expect there to be consequences. So I'm baffled that someone's not doing this.
Many of these properties, they're sold, tax sale, this year they go to tax sale. They go to tax sale, and they don't get bought up, and they roll over, and they're saying somebody has to bid on them, and if people aren't purchasing a tax sale, you know, they're available for sale later, and they go back in.
And they go back in year after year because they are undeveloped properties that nobody wants to do, and the persons that own them are litigious, and you see, you go back over the years, and you will see the same properties have not been sold. They sit that, or they're resold to the same individuals who continually do not pay their property taxes. There are hard case people, I'm sure they have problems, this is a generous county, people know each other, they don't want to do this to their neighbors, but if you look at the, if you look at the records, you will find individuals that own companies under different names, not paying their taxes, not paying their fair share, and does not get allocated to the schools. So thank you.
Pat did a wonderful job. Folks, I appreciate you guys contributing to the public hearing. I think a lot of good things were said, I think there are a lot of things I don't agree with in the way they were said. But that being said, both the last six years, as you see, we've, I think, the general hell we're dealt with the budget. Generalists wrote about taxes, property taxes. Not all those people are strictly just businesses that keep providing, and the laws require some certain things. A lot of those people are people who are losing their homes because they can't afford to pay that fourth highest property tax rate, or seventh, second on the shore. I mean, people are losing their homes because of that. So if the alternative is to raise property taxes to keep supporting higher budgets, then we're going to lose more of those families that cannot afford to live here. I don't know. I do think this was a sound budget this year, and I hope, I hope the citizenry as a whole, you guys are all very important sitting in this room, but I hope the citizens as a whole accept this kind of budget, because we do represent all 20,000 citizens in this county, and that's where our budget has to be structured, for all 20,000 citizens. Though I do appreciate everybody's views, everybody's points, come across crystal clear. Thank you, Dr. Couch and staff. But I do have one thing I want to address, and this is outside of the box here. We have an organization out here, and it's, we talk about Facebook, social, this has to do with the budget because it's starting to alarm. When we sit there on a weekend and we read on posts that an individual in this room right now, I won't put her name up there, degrades us to the point where it almost becomes threatening when other people read it, you know, being called F-ers. Okay? Posted on a live feed that circulates not only to the people in this room, but to our children, who you are sitting here trying to get the best dollar, the best rub for education, and if that's what they're hearing online, I hate to see what they're hearing at home. So, yes, I appreciate everything you guys have come here and said. I've said my piece, we will make the concrete decision we have to make, and I believe as a whole, citizens in this county will agree that this is a sound budget for all citizens.
I would just like to say, just like we talked about with the social workers, that we pointed out where the money was available, they went back and for whatever reason they hired one, which is doing a great job, but it's not enough. We just pointed out where they have $600,000 left in the budget, and $300 and some that we're going to give them in addition, that's $900,000. I would suggest, let's quit playing a shell game with our money, put some of it and fund back. Spend the money, and don't worry about next year. Next year is air prop. We are the fundraisers for the budget.
You're very unreliable next year, you say that every year.
Well, then do not interrupt the conversation, please. All right?
This is outrageous.
Please, please sit down.
It's outrageous.
Please sit down.
You can take me out, this is ridiculous.
This might be ridiculous, but the money is there, I suggest that you spend it, buy what you want. Six years in a row, there's been money left on the table every year, for six years. This year, you're ending up with $1.3 million in excess. I don't know why, and, you know, just like when...
You want to explain it to them, this is the thing that you were talking about. Please explain it. The fund balance, this is the exact thing you were saying.
Time for comment is passed.
Wait.
Please. When we had this school bus debacle, and that's exactly what it was, there wasn't ten people in this county that thought that was a good idea, but the idea was, we were going to do it because we didn't have enough money. Well, when it blew up in everybody's face, and they had to do something about it, then they went out and bought 12 or 13 brand-new buses, hired people to drive them, and never come back and asked us for a dollar. They had the money to do it with. But the reason that they went with the Baltimore firm was that because they didn't have, mean old commissioners wouldn't give them enough money, but when push come to shove and they had to do something different, they never had a problem one. I just suggest there's $900,000, spend it.
But, this is ridiculous.
Thank you.
Ridiculous.
Spend it, and we'll see what happens next year. You are not, you are not the ones that have to provide the finance, we are. We're the funding part of the puzzle. Do what you need to do, and come back next year, we'll see where we are and what we need to do, and we'll make it work. We've made it work every year since we've had a school system. Nobody is going to sit here and let the school system falter because of some bad decisions or for a lack of funding. It's never happened, it's not gonna happen. And I, once, I want to thank Billy for bringing it up, because if he didn't, I was, that, you know, we talk about the bullying in the schools, and the nastiness, and some of the, you know, I've had, you know, some people can come up here and say our school systems are great, and they are, but there's some issues. And I can name you six parents that have come to me about, and that, I'm sure it happens all over, I'm not pointing a finger at Kent County, but about the bullying, and kids, and the social media. And then you read that SOS one on social media, some of those parents ought to have their mouths washed out with soap. That's just unbelievable. So if you can, if you're not going to do better from the parents, I don't know how in the devil we expect the kids to do any better, and I think that's a bomb. And listen, they didn't do that, this has been, this whole issue has been choreographed from day one, and not just by those ladies. Thank you.
Nobody's denying that things are tight, but you said you thought it was a fair budget for people, and it was good for the county. Who here thinks that this budget is the best budget for the county? Raise your hand. One. Who would like to see more priority, because there is a priority here, who would like to see more priority given to education in this room right now? I'm just that, you know, you say that this is a fair budget, that it's relevant. Your constituents here that are engaged don't think so, and we would just like you to listen to us. Thank you.
Rest assured, just about every funding agency and department, separate agencies, find that, yes, they would like to have more, say they need more, there's only been so much we can do, and understand, Commissioner Fithian said, we have 20,000 people, 20,000 people in this county, you know, only 2,000 of them are in our public school system. So we have to look at that. A significant portion of our population is over the age of 60. We do very, very little for our senior citizens, unfortunately. Transportation is a big issue here, it always has been. It is very difficult to find a solution, which we all will try to do, no matter what. This board and the next board will try to solve transportation issues. It's not going to be easy, it's going to be very expensive, because many other things that we would like to do is maintain the quality of life we have in our county. We spend a lot of time, and a lot of energy, and a lot of effort. We all do not agree on things, and you may see a lot of our emotions, our passions, and those things, we don't necessarily always agree, but we still have to govern. We don't necessarily always agree, but we still have to govern, we still have to lead, and that's what we're elected to do, and that's what we will do.
Do you think they are also members of this community, and they are entitled to your representation?
No, not, sorry, I saw it in the group. This budget represents all twenty thousand, all of them.
I don't believe it does.
Okay, well, that's where we're going to disagree. But that's fine, that's where we're going to disagree. Again, my, I will not, and this is right here on social media tonight, I will not change what we've already created here. I'll make it public. It is a good budget for all citizens in the county, and I think all of you will understand that. If anybody in this room thinks different, that's what you do come November or June. And that's your right, that's your absolute right. But I've been here for six years, and this county's done nothing but go more positive on every direction, even the school system. We heard a lot of good things about the school. The fire will build out, which again, is an investment in the schools, for every student in the schools. That's a six million, oh no, Francois, please let me go. That's an investment for the whole county. What happened with KRN Development? And that investment from the commissioners here and the state of Maryland, that is an economic development project that will definitely help this county in a short period of time. And Lamont, all these promising things, and the negativity that's come out this year, with all the positives, with everybody who's represented in here by us, who may walk out of here and say, you know what, you guys did do the right thing by us, or you might go out of here and say you did do the right thing by us. That's your decisions. But I believe that budget today showed great investment in this county and in the citizenry. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to say something. First of all, I could be unemployed and offered a job being a commissioner, I wouldn't take it. I mean, you guys... I mean, it's unbelievable, you know, twenty years, you know, that's just unbelievable. So thank you. This is just a suggestion. It's so hard to solve any problems in public. It's so hard to do because everybody sort of takes sides. Would it make sense, this is just a suggestion, to take the superintendent, maybe one other person, and their finance person, and take one commissioner and the administrator or your finance person, and just sit down in private and try to make sure that everybody's talking about the same things on these different balances and such? I mean, I get confused, I'm not the brightest bulb in the pack, but I get confused when I talk to the different constituencies here, to see how all these things fit together. So I'm just saying, would it make sense to do that and not have everything so adversarial in public? I know you, we can't, you couldn't have everybody in those meetings, but perhaps five or six people just to sit down in private, just a suggestion. There's a guy named Collins wrote a book called Good to Great, and in that book, he talked about the difference between good and great, and we're good, but we're not great in a lot of areas because we send so much of our energy fighting with each other. So I just make that suggestion. I know in our business, we're always looking at how to get better, we have teams doing that. Just a suggestion, maybe that's some way to break some of this logjam, just a thought.
I don't see why the money that's left in the budget, right, that's going to be put in the budget this year, more than covers their requests, but they're looking at reoccurring them. You don't worry about the future, we have to worry about the future. Let's get what we need now out of what money is available, and then we'll move on next year, we'll have to figure it out next year. But, but holding this money, we're too little to be putting two or three million dollars aside waiting for a rainy day. We don't work that way.
Ronnie, I don't argue with you, I don't know, because I get confused listening to different things. I think that's a good idea to finance people, but perhaps somebody else had brought that too, so there's some more people can explain the background. What have we got to lose? We've got nothing to lose, because we don't want to spend our energies in this county doing this every year. You know, I'm not arguing with you guys saying whether this budget is good or bad, I'm saying let's get the same common language, so we know what we're talking about.
Well, it's still only one part. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say one thing, and I've been in the county a long time, too.
You identified, because I don't think you've spoken yet, so if you had spoken, she probably would have liked to hear the record.
It's Carl's. Oh, Carl's, we got...
For the record.
It's my show. Okay. I just, you know, my kids all went to Kent County High School, and you all know I've been in business and accounting, you know I'm involved, you know I care. I want to speak to the parents just a little bit. Board of Education, Kent County Commissioners, you all do need to work together, and you are working together. But there's something, whether it's been done to everybody's liking or not, the parents need to speak, the parents need to feel that their voice is going to be heard. And, you know, we used to have big PTAs, we did, we used to have a case, you know, we all remember back in the day, parents weren't always working, they weren't having to travel out of state, they weren't going to deal with a lot of the issues that they are. Our parents may not always speak beautifully, but they speak from the heart, they deeply care, they want our schools to be the very best that they can be. Let's find a way to hear those voices, let's find a way to challenge that, because I think it's terribly important. I want our school system to be the very best in state of Maryland. I find nothing wrong with having that as a goal, and I think, I look back to Mr. Friesen, Reverend Friesen's comments, and I think that, this may sound really corny at the end of a meeting like this, but we do need to love one another, we do need to work with one another, we do need to respect one another, and we do need to listen to one another. Our parents are raising these children. Our parents have so much at stake, we've got to pay attention to them. Thank you.
This is my thirteenth budget, and by far the most interesting, save of the year. And we're going to come to some time in the near future where it's just going to be me, John, and Jack in here. And, but I, I think I'd like to take what Ronnie said and move it back. I've seen the process, I've sat here, pulled out my hair, that's why I got it in my hair and...
He did.
And we end up, right, we end up, the ship is righted, and what I would think if the finance officers get together and they work something out, whatever, that maybe we're about two hundred thousand dollars apart, you know, if we're talking about dollars. And what I would suggest is, and I know you guys are going to do this, and I know the Board of Education is going to do this, why not wait, you know, at the end of September, you've got the first quarter results in, we've got our revenue in, we're going to get an idea of what our November income tax distribution is, and you meet again and see how far, rather than waiting till next April to let it fester. And I think that you do that automatically. My personal treasurer, she does it every month, and you've got Jane Towers, she does it every month. I mean, I, I used to not understand, no offense to the school, I used to not be able to understand their budget, and now I understand it. It's, you can see, see it. And what's so hard about doing that, I mean, you know, then we can...
It's a great idea.
Then we can hug each other.
No, we're not going to sing kumbaya.
Why not?
But also, we could get to the political side of it, but, you know, there's a lot of emotion, and that's what we mean. We can't have a superior school system without superior involvement. And I think we've got that, and, you know, we're not good at this, we're not good at fighting amongst each other, but I think, you know, it'll work, it will come out some way.
It always has.